Are there any questions for any commissioners about any items on the agenda or any additional items that anyone would like to add to the agenda? All right, great. Well, the first item up is the Tobacco Ordinance Proposal, Proposed Amendments and Authorization of Study Committee, and Stoney Blevins is going to help us out with this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I actually bring this matter before you on behalf of the Health and Human Services Board. On their November 22 meeting, they voted 16 to 0 to bring two recommendations to the Commissioners for consideration regarding vaping. And you have some information there in the first paragraph of the letter just about some of the serious health concerns we're seeing around vaping, not just in North Carolina, but nationwide. We're seeing a rash of deaths, and we've certainly seen folks hospitalized at mission with serious complications related to vaping over this last year. And also, we're seeing a tremendous rise in our school age population becoming quite an issue there. And so, really, the recommendations are twofold. One is that we include vaping in our county ordinances around places that we can and cannot smoke, so that we consider that a form of nicotine use and don't allow vaping where we don't allow smoking. Also, that we change the personnel ordinance so that this also applies to staff. So, right now, if a staff member wanted to vape in a county vehicle, they could. There really wouldn't be anything in our ordinance that would say that was not allowed. And then, the second recommendation, really, from the Health and Human Services Board is just to maybe do a longer-term, you know, more in-depth study of what should our county's tobacco use policies look at. I think it's been a while since we've really looked at those ordinances. A lot of counties have continued to do tremendous amount of work on this issue, and while they're not really bringing forth any recommendations, they just said to look at things like all types of tobacco to be included in the ordinances. Should the scope be expanded to places like Greenways and other public spaces like that? Signage, you know, do we have the right signage? You know, it's a little old as well. And so, if the Commission were to, you know, act on either one of those, certainly, our department would be more than willing to step up and be a resource to the Commission.
All right. So, if we do something like this, do we have any, what do we provide, you know, for people that are vaping or smoking or whatever to be able to get off of that? Do we provide anything as a service or?
We really don't. That's a really good question, and I certainly wouldn't put myself out there as the vaping expert. I mean, it is a legal, I mean, it's a legal substance, just like cigarettes are a legal substance. It's just that, you know, when vaping first came out, it was actually seen as possibly a way to help you come off of cigarettes. And if you read the CDC website, they still suggest there's a small segment of the population where vaping, right, actually might be a help to them. So, if you're doing it correctly and as prescribed, it might be better for you than smoking a whole lot of cigarettes. What we're seeing is folks are vaping things that probably should not be going into their body. That's where we're seeing, I think, a lot of these deaths. Certain chemicals are getting in their bodies. People are beginning to vape CBD oil, we see. For a while, we thought that was the culprit for a lot of the hospitalizations because it was showing up in some of the toxicology. So, really, I think, like, for years, you know, you know, I grew up in North Carolina. Everybody smoked when I was a kid. Nobody knew it would hurt you when I was a little kid. And I think the more we learned, we realized that, you know, it won't just hurt you, it'll kill you, and then secondhand smoke is dangerous. And I think we're just getting to the point where the research is really coming out, you know, on vaping. And so, we just really bring this forward, really, as a matter of the, of the publics, you know, for the public safety.
All right, Commissioners, any other feedback we want to share at this time? Well, I appreciate this being looked at. I mean, I'm certainly supportive of, you know, reviewing the policies and updating them, and I think the counties traditionally try to be kind of a leader in this area, and I think we should continue to try to do that. So, I'm certainly supportive of looking at all these questions.
Commissioner Belcher, I should say too, we do work with Tobacco Free, the Injury Prevention Branch of North Carolina, and they would offer some resources if a person really did want to help with that. But as far as our HHS, we don't offer any type of service such as that.
Thank you.
Great, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, next up, I've got Josh O'Connor, who's going to give us an update on the Greenway Master Plan and the Woodfin Project.
... here back here on both of them.
Okay.
... here there.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the presentation. Y'all may have to remind me that I'm clicking on the wrong one as I go through mine, so I can see where we're at. So, this is just to bring you up to date on our Greenway projects overall and to also bring you up to date with some specificity on the Woodfin Project. First, we're going to talk about the Greenway Master Plan. We're going to go through what it takes to go from conception to construction, look at what areas we're prioritizing and where our focus is from a geographical perspective, and then look at the project probability and status review, so basically where we're at with each project. After that, we'll transition from an overall conceptual review to the Woodfin Greenway Project Status Update, looking at the Woodfin Highway 251 Greenway as well as the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway. So, our Greenway Master Plan, which was adopted in 2012, includes 102 miles of collective greenway corridors. When it was adopted, it included no dedicated funding, and it seeks a variety of funding from whatever sources we can get money from, essentially. To date, that has largely been Federal Highway Administration's Surface Block Transportation Program or Surface Block Transportation Grant Program. And we've been able to construct .4 miles of greenway to date. That's down south in Lake Julian. It's the connector between the Lake Julian Park and the Lake Julian Park Connector. I think our biggest takeaway with greenways, as we've developed the department, developed our approach, is that greenways take a lot longer than we originally anticipated, both from an obtaining funding perspective, a regulatory perspective, and just the immense amount of work that it takes to build a greenway. We start out with the master plan. That's where we started prior to 2012. From that master plan, we transition into what is called a feasibility study. Those feasibility studies give us a very high-level and conceptual view of whether a particular greenway segment can work, and it starts to filter out some of the high-level cost. It's not an effective tool for making cost estimations, but as an effective tool for us to make decisions as to whether or not we're going to go further in the greenway design. Once we make that decision, we go into preliminary design and engineering for the project. That process can take one to two years plus, and that allows us to have a finite path to the greenway, understand where the greenway is going to go, what property owners are going to involve, and what our regulatory issues are. And from that, we can go into land acquisition. Land acquisition is simply acquiring all the easements and the property we need to construct the greenway, making sure that we have a clear path of alignment. One thing to note there is that under the original adoption of the Greenway Master Plan, one thing that we are restricted from using is the power combination to build a greenway segment. So, acquisition for us is an important step, and there are oftentimes when we may have to go back to design and redesign a segment of the greenway if we're not able to acquire property voluntarily from the property owner. Once we go from acquisition, we move to construction. Again, that process can take anywhere from a year to two years, depending on the length of greenway that we're looking at, but then we can actually walk on the greenway. One thing that I try to let the advocacy groups understand about greenways is even if someone were to give us $1 million, $2 million for the cash, it would still take that five to up to 10 years to actually construct the greenway because of all the steps that we need to go through to do it. It gets even more cumbersome if we're using money that comes from the federal government or the state government, because that just continues to add to the regulations that we have to meet in order to go to construction. As we've laid out our approach to greenways, 102 miles is a lot of greenway to cover, very financially expensive and not altogether economically feasible with our, we're trying to bite off so much at once. So, we focused our greenway effort on the I-26 and French Broad Corridor. The largest reason for that is that gave us projects to focus on that would prioritize very well during grant funding cycles, and it also allowed us to align with the efforts of other municipalities. So, by choosing the I-26 corridor, we were basically able to take our greenway efforts and go from the north and south of the city of Asheville and connect into all their work on greenways, which creates a longer contiguous stretch of greenway for our citizens to enjoy once it's fully realized. And this is an overall map of greenway projects that we have engaged at some point from the Greenways Master Plan. In order to make it onto this map, the project had to be at least studied at a feasibility level. So, these are the projects that have been through that process, and I'm going to break it down a little bit more to explain where we are at each of those projects and what our probability for completion is. But first, I wanted to go through and explain how we assess probability of completion and how we arrived at those conclusions. So, something that's got a high probability of completion, typically, we have the funding source for the next phase identified. It will make significant advances in our greenway system from a connectivity standpoint, and we may be facing having to send some grant funds back because of prior agreements we've made. Medium probability of completion, that means that we think we know where to get the funding from. Construction would interface with our larger greenway network, and we anticipate having to send funds back to a granting institution within five years. Low is that we've got no funding sources identified, our construction costs exceed our current budgetary capacity, and we don't have any pressure to have to send any funds back any point in the near future. So, these are our high probability of completion greenways that we've got. I will start with the Inca Heritage Trail, since we're going to spend more time on the other segments. But the Inca Heritage Trail, it's about a two-mile section out in Inca. It's part of the Inca Recreation Destination. It'll connect our work at the Buncombe County Sports Park to the ongoing work at the Bob Lewis Ballfields. We currently have the requests for qualifications and letter of interest issued for that project, and we've started receiving responses for it, and we expect to begin design in the first quarter of 2020 and have the engineer design by 2021. Any questions there?
So, you're just doing the request for qualifications for engineering services?
Correct.
Not for any construction services? So, that'll be a separate process once the design is complete?
Correct. And we anticipate this being a somewhat quicker completion timeline than we normally encounter because we're not dealing with a large number of landowners. We already have a pretty good understanding of the layout of the land and more in-depth feasibility study than we typically have, as well as some intermediary engineering. The biggest constraint that we're going to hit with Inca Heritage Trail is making sure that we've satisfied all the federal agencies and the requirements they have for core engineers and FEMA. And we do also have some cultural resources in the area that we're going to have to take into account as well.
But all of the right-ofways in place for the project to proceed?
As far as we understand now, that was in agreement as part of our approach to the Inca Recreation Destination and our partnership with Bob Lewis Ballfields.
All that's been executed?
We need to do some further work on the west half of that trail. Remember, we did it approximately from behind the school to about the bridge. We needed to get some more players at the table for the bridge over to near where it comes out, near the Ingalls side of that property, to complete that one.
So, the, all of the land under the Martin Lewis Partnership, that's all in place, but then beyond that, there might be additional?
There's some additional players to bring to the table on that. We don't anticipate a huge problem with that, but we need to make sure we get Army Corps approvals to put the greenway on top of that berm and to work with Dominion Gas to make sure that we can have the greenway on top of where they're putting that underground.
So, the landowner, the landowner agreements are in place, but there's some permitting stuff that will need to be gone through in terms of?
A little bit of both on the west half.
And part of that is just looking for that level of specificity in terms of what the actual layout will be of the greenway. We have it from a conceptual standpoint, but that's just putting a line on an aerial photograph. We're going to be narrowing that down to where we can locate exactly where it's going to go within a 30-foot easement and what our additional construction needs are at that time. We are looking to capture some synergies with some utility upgrades in that area, and that'll also influence some of our decision-making, which is a reason that we don't have it fully specified with landowner agreements in some of those areas.
Okay, so, my understanding is this was pretty much ready to go, and so, they had all the agreements were signed. I'm not talking about federal, I'm talking about local. Everything was done, pretty much done, and that we're, you know, we got our grants, and we're going to put the foot on the gas, and to me, this looked like an easy one to get done, and I'm not, I'm not hearing that.
No, I think this one is an easy one to get done. It's just a stage that we usually assign agreements at. We're further along in design so that we know that we're not going to go back and sign agreements a second time.
So, when would construction start?
We would be looking at 2021, and we've, this project, we've been waiting for DOT to release the funding in order to start design, and that's been one of our major holdups right now. The funding became available for the project in October. Due to some funding slowdowns in NC DOT, we're not able to access the funding until next year.
So, what can we do to speed it up?
I think speeding it up is going to come in how effectively we deal with the design and construction process when we have communicated with firms about how we're going to handle requests for qualifications. We left it relatively open-ended in terms of our schedule and have let them know that we expect this to be an expedited schedule compared to what we would normally see on some of our greenway projects. And this still has us, right now, meeting our anticipated timelines for construction for our TDA grants.
Okay, let's keep moving.
Good. We've got the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway at the northern side of the map. We've got engineering and design set to commence on that project in 2020, and I won't spend much time on that because we'll go into more detail as we move through the presentation. The same with Riverside Drive Greenway. We have design underway. We've completed 30% of the design, and we're going to get into some of the issues that have held design back there further in this presentation. And then, we have the Rad sip Connector, which we spoke about at your last pre-meeting, and I believe is on the agenda for tonight, and that's a project that will be transferred to the city of Asheville, but that's our connection into the city of Asheville's work through the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. So, moving into our greenways with medium probability of completion, we have the 191 Corridor and the Bink Creek, Lake Julian Greenway. We partnered with North Carolina DOT as they were assessing the expansion of I-26 through this area, and we're able to get them to foot the bill for the feasibility studies along this corridor. We've got these projects entered in North Carolina Department of Transportation State Transportation Improvement Project, so they're there waiting for funding, but it is a pretty intensive construction corridor with about 13-plus miles of greenway to go to construction. So, this is one where we've identified the basic needs beyond a master plan level, and we know where we need to go with the greenway. It's just we need to find some funding, commit to funding, and move it forward, but it's sitting there on the back burner until we can advance some of our other high-probability projects forward. So, any questions there? And we've got two low-probability greenways. One is the Reams Creek Greenway. We've actually advanced that to engineering and design. We're working on getting an RFQ issued. The reason that we have it as a low probability of construction is we do not have any funding identified for it. It's largely within the town limits of Beaverville, so we'd be looking for some new funding partnerships to bring that greenway to construction. We are advancing it to design, so we'll have further information about end cost, and we do have Federal Highway Surface Transportation Block Grant Programs available to help us with that. But again, we don't have information or funding source identified for construction yet.
And what's the site control for the right-of-way look like for this project? Is there, are there a lot of different property owners who would still need to agree to work on the project, or are most of the property owners or all of them conceptually in support of doing this?
We've not started engagement. We have to be careful with how we engage property owners because of some of the federal regulations out there. We, when we engage design, we will go to property owners that we feel like will be impacted and ask them to sign a letter of commitment. But at the end of the day, if we use federal funds, we also have to show that the landowner knew that they could achieve fair market value for the easement or the property, and so we typically wait to execute those agreements.
Okay, so, understanding that process, on this project, is that, is the right-of-way for the easement seen as, you know, likely to be fairly doable or quite a challenge? I mean, I guess the reason I ask is that for these, a lot of these projects where you've got a lot of different landowners who need to all agree, and maybe there's some workarounds if someone doesn't. I mean, to me, it just seems like a huge potential barrier, and for some of the projects, and so I'm just kind of wondering, is that viewed as probably not a big challenge on this one, or it could be, could be a significant challenge if there was, you know, funding to actually go forward?
I put it in moderate. You're not dealing with a lot of property owners. There are some larger parcels in there. Probably less than moderate. I mean, you're also building right next to the creek, which is going to have a lot of undevelopable or undesirable property. So, in context like that, it's a little bit easier to navigate the easements and right-of-way. We do have some room in the project to move the alignment if we need to. We're not as constrained on other projects, so this one's not going to be as hemmed in as some of the projects that, like the Woodfin Project, that have other constraints that are feeding into it. And then, the US 70 Greenway, this actually overlaps with the Fonta Flora Trail. The Commission approved to overlap our greenway system with the Fonta Flora State Trail several years ago. It's an effort that we're pursuing, but it's also a pretty expensive effort, given how much land that we're looking at in Buncombe County for that trail to traverse. We're looking at about 16 miles of trail if we follow the current alignment. So, it's there. We're looking for funding. We're also looking at how we can break that greenway down further into more digestible chunks, but given the scope of that greenway and the magnitude of that greenway, it's not risen to a high priority. So, now, I'm going to bring it back around with a little bit of information about the Woodfin Project and its current status. So, the Woodfin Greenway collectively is five miles of greenway. It's currently programmed in two projects, one for the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway and one for the Riverside Drive/251 Greenway. Each segment was part of our Greenway Master Plan in 2012. It was also part of Woodfin's Greenway Master Plan in 2011. I've got some more detailed information on the Riverside Drive Greenway. It's a three-mile corridor. We anticipate the cost of construction to now be around $2.5 million a mile. That's what our current regional average is going for. We anticipated to be through with design already, but this project is kind of drug out due to some regulatory issues and trying to secure some of the easements and right-of-way, which we have moved forward with, but we did encounter some constraints that delayed that project more heavily than we anticipated. We currently have grant funding total for this project of 3.66 million. 3 million is for the construction of the greenway, 660,000 is for the design, and I'll break those figures down a little bit, as there are some figures that involve county matches as well. We do have some terrain difficulties as we go through there. I think we've identified over 150-plus stream outfalls where we have pipes going across the embaming out into the stream, so that's something that we're going to have to mitigate as we're constructing the greenway, find out what those sources are. And we also are pinched in between the river, a railway, and a roadway, and in places that gets pretty challenging in terms of where we're going to put the greenway. This funding is a collective project between the town of Woodfin, Buncombe County, and we've received funding for the TDA that I'll break down in just a second. So, I have any questions on the overview there? The Beaver Dam Creek Greenway is another two-mile segment. This goes from MSD's administrative facility and follows the Beaver Dam Creek and comes out near the train depot for Craggy Mountain Railline near Merriman Avenue. We also anticipate the cost of construction for this greenway to be around 2.25 a mile. We've secured, right now, we have $2 million for construction secured. We also have some additional funding for design that we anticipate receiving. That figure is about 220,000 for the design.
You said Beaver Dam. You're estimating the cost as $2 million a mile for building a greenway?
2.5.
Good gracious.
And that's, that's based on looking at projects and cost overruns around the region. Originally, years ago when we started, we were told $1 million a mile, and pretty much every greenway project that every municipality has encountered has doubled that, that project cost, if not more.
Are you estimating that for the project in, in the Candler Project as well?
Yes, that one's fortunate because we are dealing with fewer landowners, and we may be able to capture some of those synergies with utilities where we can go straight over the top of existing utility right-ofways, and that's not something that we have available in some of these other projects. If we can do that, it dramatically decreases our cost of design and construction because we're dealing with a more level pad that we can start from.
It just, you know, I mean, it just intuitively seems like the project through, you're saying that's the average, we're just assuming for every mile. It's not specific. I mean, just intuitively, like, building the project through that kind of urbanized, tight footprint in Woodfin along the river, I mean, I can just see how that would be really complicated for a bunch of different reasons, but these projects like this one that are kind of more out in the country, I don't know, it just seems like they would, I could see how the cost would vary widely, you know, widely between different projects. Is that how you anticipate it'll play out, or, I mean, some might be quite a bit less, some might be quite a bit more, just depending on exactly what you have to, you know, engineer?
Yeah, and one of the historic problems with building greenways in this area is underestimating what's underground. That's, that's always been an issue, is once you start digging, you might find old cars, any amount of landfills, and we are running through some of that stuff with Beaver Dam Creek where we anticipate we're going to hit some segments of that. We also have a rail line that runs parallel to the greenway. We're running next to a creek, and we're running pretty adjacent to some old landfill area, so we don't want to back down those costs too much because we may be dealing with some brownfield remediation. Everybody get there?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does it make, it may not even be doable. I mean, does it make sense to concentrate our efforts on the easiest to achieve and just throw everything at it to get it done quicker? Or, I mean, because, I mean, I look at the whole plan, and it's, you know, four tenths of a mile has been done since it was adopted in 2012, and so, it's obviously taken a lot longer than people think, right?
Well, we have to remember that we didn't dedicate any funding until 2015, so that significantly delayed our construction timelines. And then, once we began to get funding, we started out, I want to say, in the hundreds, like, small hundreds of thousands. That allowed us to start pursuing grants, but a lot of those grants, when we pursue them, are about two years out. So, we're basically still caught in that original lag time. Dumping all the efforts in one greenway project is not necessarily going to speed us up because one of the things that slows us down is the number of coordinating entities. Like, anytime we move money for this project, anytime we hire for this project, it's got to get approved by state and federal agencies, and so that, that significantly slows us down. If we were to look at using non-restricted funding sources, we could dramatically speed up the cost of greenway construction, but that being, we'd be coming out of pocket 100% of the cost. Once you federalize a project and apply federal dollars, you completely change the regulatory landscape.
Has that been seriously considered in any of these projects? Especially the ones where, you know, just looking at the topography and the land might be relatively? Especially the ones where, you know, just looking at the topography and the land, might be relatively inexpensive to build some of these if you could just go, just go do it.
There are some conversations occurring with that. A lot of it is more linked into what conversations can we have with developers during the developer, development approval process? Can we create some of those greenway linkages that way and require greenway dedication as part of large development, construction projects? And then at that point, that's, that's one mechanism to find some funding there. To date, I've not seen anybody that's like a local municipality that's willing to pull a bunch of money out of pocket. And then we do chance running into issues with ADA compliance or further compliance should we decide to upgrade one of these facilities in the future with federal money. It's a strategy. It's just not something that I've seen anybody willing to jump out there and do yet. So this is the collective map of this greenway in a little bit more detail. The brown segment to the north is the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway that's running east to west. And then that transfers to the Woodfin Greenway that runs parallel to the river and Riverside Drive. The reason this is why we use federal funding is we started out with a one point one three million dollar local funding commitment for both design and construction. We partnered with FHWA that brought in four point five three million for a total of five point six six million on the total project. And that's not including TDA funds or the, the, the funding for the other components, the Woodfin project.
Is that for all the greenways or one?
That's for one. That's for the Woodfin Greenway.
I thought you, I'm sorry, may I bring this down? I thought you said there's three point six million in funds for this project.
The three point six million is for Riverside Drive. The other two million is for the Beaver Dam Creek. So collectively for the two greenways, which are all part of the same project, there's five points.
Okay, five point six is for Beaver Dam and alongside the river.
Yes.
Between the county and the FHWA, but that doesn't count the town of Woodfin and doesn't count the TDA?
Correct.
So there's actually like, when you add it all up, there's a, there's a lot of money for this project, right?
Uh, I think we, it's around twelve.
Around twelve million dollars.
And I've just got some shots of some of the stuff that we're trying to work with in the area. This is the Mill at Riverside Studio. One of the issues that we have there is you can see how far the pavement extends toward the riverbank. They've been exceptional to work with, but it's not just a typical greenway design. We're having to figure out how to integrate current parking areas, retaining walls out there at MSD's Equipment Storage Yard and, and other issues in order to get the greenway through there. It's, it's more complex than just asking the landowner to give us a footprint for the greenway. In some areas, we're having to go through and ask them, can they move fences and retaining wall structures? And any number of things on their property in order to accommodate the greenway. So that's lengthened the, the amount of time that's taken for design and caused some issues with our cost overall. This is another issue that we ran into on the backside of Silverline Plastics. We have a Duke Transmission Line that typically they won't allow us to be within thirty feet of their poles. When we examined that, we originally looked at some cantilevering structures that would go out over the French Broad River in order to get us out of the, the Duke rightaways. And after looking at the cost and assessing the cost, we were able to go back with Duke and ask them for some exceptions, which they've been willing to work with us on to, to be able to put the, the greenways closer to those poles. It's not without, it's some additional design costs and some fencing structures and some other things that we have to do. But working through solutions like this have dramatically increased our design cost, hopefully allowing us to reduce our construction cost in the long run. This is an, an option that, once we were able to navigate this, took a significant amount of time, but also saved us a couple million dollars from not having to cantilever a greenway design over the French Broad and has a better environmental and ecological impact as well.
So Duke has, has, Duke has formally agreed to let us use a, have a right-of-way underneath the, or within the, the utility transmission line easement?
Formally, not on paper, but formally they committed to that in the last onsite meeting that we had with town representatives and Duke representatives.
But it's just a, it's a kind of a verbal agreement at this point, is all we have?
And it's all, it's a, a three-way agreement with Silverline Plastics as well because they've got to make some concessions for where they're allowing us to site that greenway. And then these are the other design considerations. There's how close we are to the rail line, the power line, the road, and the train line. Fortunately, Craggy Mountain Railline is not a conventional rail line. It's one that's privately owned. We've been, been able to work with them to get us closer than we would typically be to a rail line because we've got a lot more certainty on what's going to be operating on that rail line and how often. But there are spots without those agreements that we wouldn't be able to, to get the greenway through without having to redo some road realignments. And the, the blue lines that you can see there just show the amount of property that's impacted by both FEMA floodplain and FEMA floodway. One of the things that drives costs on a project like this is since we can't just move the project out of the floodway, we are having to do no rise studies and additional engineering studies to show that this greenway is not going to have an impact on Asheville's overall flooding. And that's just a more in-depth view of the connection between Woodfin taking us through Montford down into the River Arts District. So our status with the Woodfin project right now, the design for the Riverside Drive, Woodfin Greenway is at thirty percent. The project is part of a larger destination project similar to what we organized with the Inca Recreation Destination. It includes Silverline Park, which is currently under design, the Woodfin Wave, which is a structure across the entire French Broad River to create some water sports tourism, and the Woodfin Wave Park, which will be the amenities to support that wave structure. We are the lead agency working with several partners. We take on the greenway design and construction. And we're also collaborating with Federal Highway Administration, the Town of Woodfin, and the Tourism and Development Authority to get the project done. The initial cost estimates, if I can flip you off a slide, I apologize, came in when, at a million dollars per mile. The feasibility study that we originally engaged for this project actually put construction at, in the hundreds of thousands a mile. When we went to construction and started doing our initial investigation of grants, we based that on regional figures and elevated that significantly to a million dollars a mile. But at that point, there still was not a lot of regional context in terms of greenway construction. It was after we saw New Belgium constructed and some of the other projects hit significant cost overruns that we went back and adjusted our figures a second time. The current greenway costs have escalated to that two point five million dollars a mile. Right now, that's based on our regional figures. And our engineering and design efforts have been complicated by the regulatory requirements. We're dealing with some pretty poor land quality in that area. There are areas that we found that we're going to have to remove soils, augment soils, remove debris, and do a lot of ground preparation work that we did not originally anticipate. We have some issues with landowner preferences, as y'all have raised. We've got some issues where we could be out back next to the river, the landowner doesn't support that, and so we're going to have to take that section of greenway out in front of the building unless that landowner changes their mind. It's taken longer than anticipated for the utility coordination, even in coordinating with the railroad, just to get a permit to cross railroad. A lot of times we're looking at a three to four month approval period. And that's not with construction. That's to get our people across the railroad. We've got historical environmental damage and degradation. We've encountered pretty much everything we could along that section of greenway. That's not something that we didn't anticipate. It's just given us a lot to work with in terms of how we accommodate those issues for design. And then we have the transportation constraints with the road being so close to the river there. Our ability, ability to advance the project to construction is somewhat limited because of some capital flows that we have with the project. I'm going to break those down for you. So in breaking that three point six, six million dollars down further, our initial design grant for the greenway was six hundred and sixty thousand for the Riverside Drive portion of the greenway. I think there's been a conception that that was our budget for the project and the reality was the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars was how much that we could get from FHWA when we made the application and maxing that application out. Our current cost estimate from the engineer placing, places our cost at one point two, six, two million dollars. And that's the additional capital that we need to advance that design toward completion. As I mentioned, we've got a variety of funding sources contained within the project. We've got the Woodfin Bond coming in at four point five million. We've got TDA coming in with a two point two five million dollar contribution. FHWA is coming at five point one, and Buncombe County's commitment at this point is one point one three two million. In order to satisfy all the granting regularly, or granting entities, as the conclusion of this project, we are obligated to produce both the greenway, Silverline Park, Riverside Park, and the Woodfin White Water Wave.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say that you were required to do the Beaver Dam project as well?
Yes, the, the greenways collectively. That's, that's what's listed in our TDA application.
Is that, so it's just a TDA requirement? That's the only place that's a requirement?
Let me look at that slide for just a second. That is our only requirement. I believe it was listed in the Woodfin Bond, but that's not a requirement that extends to us.
On the bond referendum that was listed as a project, or?
The greenways were listed as part of the bond referendum, but that's not something that
But that's not like legal obligation. That's just like, it was kind of identified as all the projects they hope to get done as part of their local funding.
Correct, and we are third party to that, so it's not an obligation that we are obligated for.
So it's not a TDA requirement, it's a bond requirement?
It is a TDA.
It is a TDA requirement.
It is a TDA.
Because all of those was lumped together in one ask from the TDA.
Correct. And, and in order to get TDA approval, they want to see more of a destination concept, and so all of those components were listed as deliverables for the TDA grant. So the Woodfin project costs, I've got it broken down for the Riverside Greenway. Our original design money was a hundred and thirty-two thousand. County commitment that got us five hundred and twenty-eight thousand federal money for a total of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, or six hundred and sixty thousand in design. Our current estimated design cost sits at one point six one seven million dollars, so we've got a major deviation there. Our current construction obligation in terms of Buncombe County's pay-in is six hundred thousand, and we will get two point four million dollars from the FHWA for a total of a three million dollar construction budget, which is clearly less than the two point five million dollars a mile that we need. Our estimated construction cost at this point exceeds six million. For Beaver Dam Creek Greenway, we currently don't have any design money invested from Buncombe County. We do have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars pending from the FHWA for design of that greenway. Four hundred thousand dollars for county commitment to construction and one point six million dollars for FHWA's commitment to construction for a total of two million for construction. These numbers are laid back out. The one I want to focus on is in terms of consideration for action and next steps, is that we look at, in order to advance this project forward, currently, we're kind of stuck until we have some additional capital outlined to continue doing construction. As of right now, we've spent a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of our six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, or six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that design. But in order to advance the, the design to completion and to be guaranteed that we're going to get to completion, we need that nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar deficit. Right now, we're stuck between continuing to advance the design and running out once we've got the money, or we've spent through the money that we have on hand. But what we request is that we reallocate some of those, the funding for future construction to get us through design and look at an additional obligation in the next budget year to supplement this project.
And you're referring just to the corridor along the river?
Yes.
So, and what would the additional amount be in this, the, in the next budget that would be requested?
It's going to be nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Okay, nine, nine fifty, okay, nine fifty-eight, right.
But doing it that way allows us to continue work on the project now and continue advancing it toward design instead of having to wait until the budget year.
So, you know, I'm definitely in favor, and this is a, this is a, I mean, this is a complex project, you know, I mean, just going down there, I mean, from a layperson's standpoint, it's, it's a tight footprint, you know, there's all these different things going on down there. It's a busy, busy area, but I think, I mean, I think the Woodfin, the, the, especially the corridor along the river, this will be one of the best projects we have. It'll be so heavily utilized once it's built. I'm definitely in favor of doing what we can to continue the design process on it, you know, including shifting some money from, from construction to design on this project, but I guess I would also just kind of raise the question of, I mean, I, I'd like the idea that we're planning some other things that are further out, but just in thinking about this, I mean, I think there's also just, we just need to get some of these done, right? So if there's, if there's funding allocated for other, to me, this is, you know, the project in Inca, which I think is going to be on a faster track.
It could be an easy one.
Nothing's easy, right? But it should be relatively easy, relatively easy. So, so hopefully that one comes in, maybe it comes in less, less costly than what's typical because of the topography and everything, but I mean, I would also be open to redirecting some resources from other projects to just make sure this one's, this one's getting done, so.
So I'm kind of, in a similar way, I think, you know, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on something else that, you know, is a million dollars more. You know, and that's, that's tough. We got to explain to everybody. And that's not directed at you. It's just directed in general. I understand what you're dealing with. But also think that when, you know, when you're in a community and you hear all the good news about what's happening, I mean, you get excited about it, kids get excited about it, and you don't want them to, you know, grow up on you before it's done, you know, so instead of having this big monster plan that we're putting a little bit of money everywhere, it seems to me we should pick what we can get done and direct that, you know, that, that funding towards that. So I think I said the same thing you did, didn't I? Was it close?
Yeah, I mean, these are all great corridors. I'd love to see them all happen, but I just, there is, and I hear you that some of these decisions that are with other agencies, not us, all the money in the world won't necessarily speed those up. So I to, I totally get that, but I would be supportive of, you know, focusing our resources in the ways that we can to help get our, you know, our top priority projects advancing as fast as they possibly can.
I think the biggest constraint there is that we're, when you look at greenway investment, like off the cuff, we've got about twenty-one million dollars in federal highway grants coming down. It's a four point two million dollar county commitment. So even reallocating those is not going to get us the capital funding that we need in order to advance the projects. We're using so much external funding compared to such a small proportion of county funding, and that just kind of extends how long it takes us to get access to the capital.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I hear that our percentage is small relative to that, but also just, I mean, if all these projects play out on the cost that you have, I mean, these other projects aren't, are not going to get done, right? Because for the very reasons you just explained, there's not enough money to do them in the foreseeable future, so I realize like our money is, is not the biggest driver in this, but it sounds like, you know, we're going to need to put in more if we want to see some of them done realistically, so I'd be, and I'm open to that. I'm, I'm very supportive of these projects moving ahead, you know? It sounds like if we did do some redirecting, we'd have to talk to TDA about like, hey, would you be open to some of your money coming over here so we can get this one done? I bet they, I bet they'd be open to that conversation because they want to see things get done too. And they understand some of these projects end up being more complicated and expensive than originally when you first look at them. But anyway, so I'm, I think, I think we'd have to talk to some of the partners too about maybe, would they be open to that as well? As well as maybe also just not only changing the funding, but maybe putting in more, more money too. I mean, so I might have to have all these conversations.
And this is something that we're looking at beyond Buncombe County at a regional level because we're not the first one to hit an issue like this with federal funding. Pretty much every greenway project that I know of that's using these funding streams is hitting the same thing. So what can we do to build in opportunities for overages and higher contingencies?
Well, the, I mean, the projects down on the, on the riverfront in Asheville ran into a bunch of these cost overruns. But to their credit, to their credit, you know, they've, they take a lot of heat for different things in the community, but to their credit, the TDA stepped in and just gave them four million more dollars. Here's four million more dollars because we want to see these projects happen. And I think these, these projects we're working on in Woodfin are, are very, are very similar. I mean, everyone, everyone knows they're going to be great when they're done, and they're, but they're hard, so.
See, and I, you know, for me, of course you, you know, I mean, I voted for all these. You know, and how passionate I am about the one in Inca, I mean, you and I got a long history on that. I drive by that thing every day, you know, and the Ingles is across the street from it. You know, and so I run into people all the time asking about that. Because when, I run into people all the time asking about that. And, you know, once we get over the hurdle of voting to invest taxpayer dollars, I'd like to see us take a, a same draw, you know, drill down on the, on the one in Inca. You know, really specifics on what we can do to, to speed along because it's part of the Buncombe County Sports Park, and I guess that's coming along, you know, pretty good. You know, the lights have went up out there. There's, there's some, there's some things that, you know, that we're seeing out there. And because it'd be, it'd be really good for us to be able to, you know, when somebody asks when something's going to happen, to try to give a shot at giving the answer to that, even though it's very complicated. What's the federal dollars on just the greenway, the trail portion in Inca? Do you remember? If not, you can bring it back. Do you remember? If not, you can bring it back to us.
Six million, it's four point eight federal and one point eight, one point two county.
One point two from us?
Yes.
Four point eight from them?
And then six million.
Six million from the TDA?
Yes, so twelve million in LA.
So the four point eight is, that includes the, the trail system, that includes, but includes some sidewalk connectivity over there?
It can, our hope is to, like, to try to pay for it out of that four point eight if we can.
Okay, so I thought it was in the, in the, in the original design?
Yes.
And so anyhow, whatever we can do to have a, you know, a gathering and accelerate some of this, you know, I would be, I would be for, so.
And I will ask Max to put up the one slide, because one bullet point that I think is on that last slide covers that, just that last slide. In order to make sure that y'all understand where this is going, and y'all maintain an understanding of where we're at with these Greenway projects, they are complex, they do take a while to get through. We're including Greenway projects in the comprehensive CIP for 2021, which will include funding requests that you understand the complete design and construction costs as we know it at that time, and we'll have a better picture of that moving forward.
I do have one other question, is there an update on the, the Black Mountain project?
That one should be easy.
They, I know that they have.
It's within the town limits that they were, you know, working on, and we, I think, we'll just, is there an update on that one?
Yeah, I believe our total funding allocation for that one was four hundred thousand dollars over three years, that project's moving forward. They hit two major issues, one was a railroad trestle that they were having to go under, and then the second was going under Highway Nine there. And I believe they've actually come back with some designs that are going to be much more advantageous than they originally pictured, but it's just back up and going to federal and state approvals for that.
Okay, but Black Mountain is the lead on design and implementation, we're just contributing some funds to.
Correct.
But it's, it sounds, it sounds like that they're moving ahead, that's great.
Correct.
Awesome. All right, well, commissioners, any other questions or feedback for, for now? Josh, anything else you want to share with us, or anything else?
I'm sure I'll be back, but thank you all for your time today.
We appreciate the update, appreciate everyone's work on this. All right, next up is Rachel Nygaard, who will be talking about the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. I'm sorry, next up is the Greenways Committee, still on that, that's us. All right, so commissioners, as we talked about at our last meeting, we need to decide who we're going to interview. So, I think, you know, because there's a ton of applicants, twenty-five total, if we interviewed all, we need to take probably a whole day to do it. So this is still going to be pretty time consuming, but I'm hoping we can maybe, all right, but just to refresh our memory, how many positions do we ultimately appoint?
Nine.
Add, three from each district. Yeah, so we need to, we need to select nine, kind of hoping maybe we can interview, I don't know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, something like that. So one, one suggestion would be that we could just kind of go around, each person nominate, like, one person, we'll see how many comes out of the first round, because I think we'll have a lot of overlap is my hunch, and then we could go around again, everyone nominate your second person, see how many we have, and see if, like, are we starting to feel good about our pool of applicants, or are there other folks that people really, really want to have interviewed? So that was going to be my suggestion, is we all go down one at a time and nominate someone, and then do it again, and see how many we have, and then we could do a third round if we don't have enough applicants, or there's others that people really want to talk to. Does that sound like a good process?
Sounds good.
So maybe we can get Commissioner Fryer to fill that out and put it in later.
Yeah, we can, we can ask him for his input as well. All right, can we start on your side, Amanda, and just go down?
Sure, my first recommendation is Ann Babcock.
Okay. Great, Al, do you have somebody?
I'm trying to find somebody I don't.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in here I don't, I don't know, which is great. We can come back to you too if you want.
Yeah, you want to pass on me, because I don't have a clue.
Jennifer, and I'm, these are not necessarily in, do these need to be order of preference?
You're going to get at least one more nominee, so just pick whoever, yeah.
Well, I'm expecting to get three, so I'm open.
Well.
As we go around. I gotta get three, so.
All right, go ahead.
All right. So, because these are people I want to interview, Jennifer Boobinick, probably butchered the name, but that's.
Okay, hang on.
Because I just went down, it's number six.
Okay, well, the only reason I say you may not get three is that some of your other people might get nominated by other people, so you might get your three, but just, you know. All right, I would definitely supportive of, of Ann as well, but also with her already being mentioned, I'll mention Lena Richards. Okay, Jasmine?
Susan Bean.
Number three, Susan, yeah, maybe mention the person's number too, so we can kind of find out on here easily when we're going through, there's so many. Robert, do you have a suggestion?
Yes, Teresa Williams, twenty-five.
Thank you. Teresa. Okay.
You want us to come back this, from that direction, this one?
Um, let's, why don't we just kind of take another pass, this way, Amanda?
Number one, Dusty Allison.
Amanda, you're picking, picking people, I was going to say, all right, Dusty Allison, great.
Did I get two this time?
You can have up to two, yes.
Okay. Number twenty-three, Derek Toon, and, number, what number is that? Five.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Twenty-two, Kelly Sparks.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, we're at nine so far. I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, actually, I'm gonna hold off for now and kind of see who else gets mentioned from our other commissioners.
Eric Ernst, number twelve.
Okay. Very.
Well, I'm just going to give my second one, save one, twenty-two, Kelly Sparks, which Commissioner Belcher also.
Okay.
And also, I'm noticing something here with what we're doing.
We're really loading up District Three there, have you noticed?
Okay.
Well, that's the old district, you may or may not.
Yeah, but two eighty-six, two eight-seven-five.
Are the districts that are listed here, that's the current district configuration, is that correct Lamar, not the future elections map? I bet it is, because this is probably all created prior to the.
Well, we mentioned it before, new ones last.
I will actually defer to Josh, if Josh has that information, I don't want to give the incorrect answer to that.
Josh, do you know, so the districts that are listed here where the folks reside, those are delineated by the districts that exist today, not the new districts that will go into effect in a subsequent election cycles, is that right? These are the current district boundaries, okay? Yeah.
Well, just remember, these are for interviews. When we get finished, we have to select nine, so we don't need to select nine today.
No, no, we need a few more than nine.
We need more than nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we currently have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And I wonder, yeah, I wasn't keeping track of how many we have from each district while we're doing this. But we need a few more, so why don't, I'm just going to go again, and if people haven't, you know, some other people.
Well, we need one more pass.
But is there, are we, are we clearly deficient in a certain district where we need to be particularly?
I don't know, read the names off, I'll give you the district.
Okay, let's see, Ann Babcock is two, Jennifer Boobinick is three, Lena Richards, three, Susan Bean, one, Teresa Williams, three, Dusty Allison, one, Derek Turno, one, Shay Brown, one, Kelly Sparks, three, and Eric Ernst.
Kelly Sparks, actually, Kelly was actually two, I have like six from District Three.
No, wait, wait, Kelly Sparks is three.
She's three.
According to this chart.
So really, the big issues.
Two, myself and Joe, which.
I know, she's, she lives in District Three.
She's three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not counting votes, I'm counting which district they're in, sorry, I'm not clear. Eric Ernst is in District?
Three.
Three.
Three, so actually it's District Two.
District Two is what.
That, we need definitely at least two more people to even meet the minimum, so.
Wow.
We've got a bunch from one and three, so does anybody have, I'll start with Amanda, but we'll go down, and if you don't want to nominate someone, you can take a pass and reserve the right to bring it back later. Is there someone from District Two, Amanda?
Stuart Cowles, I hope I'm saying his last name correctly.
I'm sorry.
Stuart Cowles, number eight.
Okay.
That's who I was looking at.
Okay.
So you said him?
Al or Joe, do y'all have another number two?
Well, I had, I had put a check beside of Stuart Cowles.
Yeah, I had two.
Let me, let me check one, and I'll tell you in just a minute, okay?
What about?
Let me check seventeen.
Philip Coe.
They are the old districts, is what I said.
What about Philip Coe from District Two, he's number seven.
Now, it says Fletcher, is he in, is he, well, it says District Two though, is he in the Buncombe County?
He is not in District Two, well.
There is a section of Fletcher in the, in the current old District Two.
Okay, so Lamar, he is a resident of Buncombe County?
Correct.
Okay.
Coles?
Coles County.
Philip Coe.
Coe.
Hang on.
What is Lantern Resources?
I don't know, I'm getting ready to find out.
We're all about to find, everyone, what is Lantern Resources? Hey, Josh, hey, I also would just ask, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but are there, are there any other nominees that the staff would just want to make sure at least, like, get interviewed on this list of applicants? And you can think about that for a minute if, if you'd like to, but if there's, I think we're kind of getting near the, near the list, but we, we do need a few more. If there's anybody you feel like we ought to interview, feel free to, feel free to throw, throw a recommendation.
I would probably put that guy on the list because he wants to create a cud zoo free zone. He doesn't know Asheville is a cud zoo free zone, not making fun of that, it's just on his application.
It's impossible.
It is impossible.
Good goal.
Okay. Okay.
So there was somebody else from District Two that we needed to look at to see whether we.
Yeah, I'll just open it up to any nominees.
Samuel Mason, let me, let me look real quick, please.
Samuel Mason is number one, he's number one.
Is he?
Yeah, he's, he's in District Two.
He's hiding two.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
Well, you got, how many you got from District Two?
We have two.
No, we have three, we have three.
We have three, no.
Jay Fine?
Yeah, who's Jay Fine?
Are you, are you, he's not currently on the list, are you suggesting putting him on the list? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm too.
Jay Fine? Okay, so we're now at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, we're at twelve. We have a sufficient number from each district, from one and three, we have additional members.
Some of these could end up in District Two, though, I'm thinking some of these threes could end up in Two.
You know, for the, just to, for the sake of, you know, decision-making on this, my suggestion is that for this initial round, we are working under the assumption that the districts are the districts as they exist today, right? Like, in the, in the future, you know, when reappointments are happening, years in the future, I think we'll want to keep the, keep the policy of, and, and we may need to, we'll, you know, we'll, just, just like elections, like the elections will be different in the future, but for now, I think we should just keep it based on the lines that exist today, otherwise this could get really messy. Anybody else? If there's anybody else that someone really, and we could wait, we could see who Commissioner Fryer wants to suggest. If he has one or two, then we're probably in the right neighborhood of interviewees, and we can always interview more. Josh, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm leaving the list, I think you.
Oh. Samuel Mason.
Okay.
I want to add Samuel Mason. If y'all look at it, look at his resume, you'll, you'll want him on the list too.
Okay. All right.
He could end, he.
He's another District One.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
All right, well, very good.
Sports management, look at this.
Which I think it's going to be in District Two now, Lester, Ally Howell.
Lester, Lester's one now.
That's another district. Ally Howell, District.
See where he lives.
He lives in Lester?
He's hunting up Mason, yeah. Could be, but this guy's.
That's the current District Three, but that, again, that, we're going to keep with the existing districts for the sake of making these decisions. But do you, do you feel, you want him on the list?
I think we need someone.
The seventeen.
Okay, Ally Howell.
I missed, I missed Mason in my pass-through, he definitely needs to be on the interview list, Mason.
Okay, I got him down, I got him, Jason, Samuel Mason?
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's stop, and we have a lot, this will be, now, how, how much time do we want to spend with these interviews? Let's see, we have.
It'd be nice to do three in an hour, do twenty minutes if we could do.
Oh, I think it should be, unfortunately.
Fifteen.
I'm thinking ten.
Ninety seconds, speed taken.
I think, it's just with the volume you have of this, I think you have to move pretty quickly, so I'd suggest ten minutes, and.
Better do fifteen, I can't, I can't do an introduction in ten minutes.
Um, I'm, that's where I'm at, let's, what do y'all think?
I'm at fifteen minutes in fairness to them.
I'm going to go ten minutes, because this is going to be the first interview cut.
That's what we did last one.
It will probably be one after this.
And you need a, you need a minute or two to transition between people, it's going to end up being three hours of interviews if we do this, even at ten minutes, would be my hunch. Okay, sorry, Joe. All right, anything else people want to suggest on this for now, I think we've done what we needed to do. All right, perfect. Now, we move on to, yes, ma'am?
Chairman, do y'all have a timeframe when y'all want to do these interviews?
That's a pretty good idea.
We're not doing anything until after the first year. That's impossible.
I.
I would just like to let these applicants know that they're in consideration for the interview.
Our first meeting of the year is on Tuesday, the seventh. We also have an Affordable Housing Committee that day, and there might be a pre-K meeting that day too. I would suggest we not do it on that day, because it's just going to be too much. I think we should probably call a special meeting sometime in the first two weeks of the year.
Yeah.
So if we could just not figure that out right on the spot, but Lamar, if we could do a check-in, and let's just find a date to come over, and. I'd probably prefer afternoon, just myself, rather than morning. All right, now we come to Rachel Nygaard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here to update you about Strategic Partnership Grants, and there are two pieces. One of them is about appointing the new committee. So in light of the conversation that you're having related to the Parks Committee, it's something that we'll, we'll want to talk through regarding the process for selecting those appointments. To begin, wanted to update you about the Strategic Partnership Grant process. You should have a copy of the grant guidelines in your materials for today's meeting. The grant process officially opened on Monday of this week, so December sixteenth. The information is posted online for members of the public and people associated with community organizations. They can go to buncomcounty.org/grants and review these grant guidelines, which were created based on the guidance and criteria. which were created based on the guidance and criteria that we got from the Board of Commissioners for this grant program. Those grant guidelines include thorough information about the eligibility timeline, grant application process, grant writing workshop, et cetera. There is one item related to the eligibility criteria that we want to come back in and check in with you about, and that is the type of organization. When the Board of Commissioners established the criteria for this grant program, we made it so that nonprofit organizations would be eligible to apply for funding. The question is, would we like for public organizations to also be eligible to apply? I know that there's been some conversation between members of the board and with the manager about potential eligibility for a governmental organization to be able to make application to Buncombe County for funding for a community project through this avenue. If, if the board would like to take that up for consideration, we can bring a marked-up version of those grant guidelines on the agenda for your next regular meeting, which would be January seventh to vote on.
Which would just simply say that public agencies are also eligible?
It would.
Okay, which could be, like, okay.
They would essentially have, I was thinking, is the timeline written, that the grant applications are due in mid-February, on February fourteenth, so those public organizations would have roughly a month or five weeks to, to get that application in.
Okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
Is there interest in putting that on your agenda for January seventh?
Well, maybe just to kind of, like, you know, at first blush, you might, you might kind of think, you know, that doesn't seem like what this is about, but just as a reminder of what we currently do, right, and maybe some of the rationale behind that, so we think about that before maybe making a decision. Currently, currently, we fund, it's a small amount of money, but we fund the HRC, right, because that is a jointly-appointed board by the City Council and the County Commission, and the scope of that board is countywide. There's probably more things they deal with in the city, but they do have a countywide mission, I, it's my understanding.
That's accurate, that's the Historic Resources Commission. There's forty-five hundred dollars, I think, in the strategic partnership grants currently that goes to the City of Asheville for that city-county work.
With the rationale being that, you know, shouldn't fall solely on the city, this is something we do together, so that's the rationale for that. And then, on the, on the Nature Center, you know, the, the city used to charge a lower rate, like, this is a subsidized operation, right, like, it costs the city a half million dollars a year, or whatever the current amount is, to run the Nature Center, so since they put a lot of taxpayer money from their jurisdiction into it, they gave a discounted rate to city residents to attend, but then I think some commissioners were like, well, how come it costs more for county residents to go than the city? And so, I think the city, it said, well, you know, or we all concluded, well, it's, if, if they are putting in way more money, if we want the county residents to have the same low rate, we ought to put in the funds to make up that difference to make the city whole, so, I don't know, I kind of feel like these different places where we work together, they each have their own rationale, it kind of feels different to me than the rationales that go into the strategic partnerships grant pool, so, I'm, I'm sort of thinking, just sort of thinking out loud here, but I wonder if maybe we should pull them out, but, but just sort of in a separate decision process, decide if we, you know, we want to continue those partnerships with the other public agencies or not, but I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, I personally would like to see those continue, myself.
So, I'm gonna jump, jump on the Nature Center, I'm a big fan, you know, everybody in my neighborhood goes Nature Center, and taxpayers from all over the county go to the Nature Center, I don't know where you put it in, but to me, that, that's one of the things that's been confusing about this, is that, you know, I, I don't want to lose advocacy for some of these, you know, destinations or some of these things that we fund, whether the city funds them or we fund them, I mean, people in the city pay county taxes, and, you know, there's some things that make sense for us to do together, the Nature Center is one of them. We lost the Health Adventure, there's no way we need to lose this one. Nature Center's a, is a good place for folks to go, so I don't know where it, where it lands, but it needs to land somewhere. County Manager, you got any thoughts on?
Before you continue, I'd like to jump in and just add one clarification with permission. The Friends of the WNC Nature Center is a nonprofit organization, that funding is provided through a nonprofit organization, and they are still eligible to apply as currently structured. Please continue.
All right. The items that we were talking about that would require that the government entities are eligible to apply were like the KALA, the Youth Leadership, that we do directly fund to the City of Asheville, or even to some Buncombe County schools, like, there's funding that we're specifically going to government entities, not the Nature Center or, or the Historic Commission like that, but those are the items, those are nonprofits, the items that we were looking at was direct funding that we provide to the City of Asheville, and the one that comes to mind was the KALA, the Youth Leadership Academy, that we fund.
When we funded the Nature Center in the past to make up for the, you know, the charging city residents less than county residents, did that go to Friends Group or to the city?
Yes, to the Friends of the Nature Center.
And then they passed it on to the, well, whatever, we don't really care how they did it, but it, it fixed the problem, right?
Correct.
Of county residents being charged something different? Okay.
I mean, is it, is it the best way to, to deliver that money to the Friends of the Nature Center, or for that to, to go somewhere else?
That is how we helped fund that. We hadn't thought about partnering with the city on that, that was truly, truly to the Nature Center, and that was our direct support to the Nature Center, so that wasn't one that we were talking about here in the government entities.
Okay, well, he, he brought it up, and I love it, so we talked about it.
Well, why don't we, here's my suggestion, why don't we, why don't we amend the process so that public agencies can apply, so we're not precluding the possibility, and we'll, we'll let the process unfold, if, if some of the things that, you know, and again, I think this might be part of the outcome, though, of this, this whole new way of doing it, I mean, some things might fall out of this funding process, and we might then, as a board, have to say, are we okay with that? Or are we gonna step in and separately decide to fund some things that are not gonna get funded otherwise, so, because I do feel like some of these, some of these things, like, like, this particular issue, like, it's, it's hard to ima, like, the rationale we had for funding this is not the same criteria we're giving this group to choose how to program these funds, right? So, I feel like it's, it's unlikely that would get funded through our new process, but...
It should be.
But we might need to find a different way to do it if it doesn't.
So, we, you know, my concern with having, you know, a committee, and, you know, there's certain things that, you know, it's my job to represent the whole county now, and to advocate for things that I hear, and so I just want to make sure that's not lost, and this is a great example of it, you know, the Nature Center, is to make sure that that's not lost in the process, so, I think we're seeing the same thing.
Amanda, Al, Robert, Jasmine, y'all have any thoughts?
I support amending it. I do as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So, we'll bring an amended, proposed amended version for a vote at your next meeting.
That'll be the only, we just need to make sure, I think, you know, Mr. Drew, I commented in an email, to make sure that if we're amending anything that we're, we have that's already in place, that when it comes to us, that it's got strike lines in it and red print, because it's impossible for me to determine what it was before, and I, and I can't remember what it was I emailed on, but it's, maybe it's be something, it may be something we're looking at tonight, but if it is, no pressure, but anyhow.
All right.
Got it.
Is that a visual?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
That's, that's good on the, on the eligibility item. Now, we have the committee. We took applications for the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee for a three-week period and received twenty-one applications. Those applications are being compiled by staff currently. We reached out to the applicants in the first couple of days this week, gathering some additional info from them and clarifying around connection to nonprofit organizations, so that we make sure that we have full and complete information about their background and their expertise when we bring this to you. And so, I guess the question to the board is, would you like to use the same process for determining members that you'll appoint to this committee as you have just done with the committee discussion that you just held?
Could you walk?
Yes.
Could you just walk us through sort of the timeline you need vision around when that committee?
So, the last bullet, the last bullet on the page, on the screen that you're looking at, may be the one that's confusing you, because it said, it says committee appointment scheduled for January seventh, that's when staff was thinking that we might bring a recommended slate for the board to consider. It sounds like the board would like to, on a one-by-one basis, select and interview candidates. We will have some categories assigned to the applicants, so we've asked them to share with us what expertise they bring, say, in the, in the category of environmental stewardship versus educated, educated and capable community, so there will be some, some natural categories that show themselves, as well as age and zip code and attributes, in addition to the narrative answers to the questions about what they bring to the board, but what we'll do is organize that information for you, present it, and then in terms of timeline, we would like to have the committee seated no later than when the applications close on February fourteenth. It would be ideal to have them selected prior, so that we can do some orientation before they begin reviewing the applications.
So, you have twenty-one applications right now?
Yes.
I mean, I would like to see twenty-one applications, just like we did here.
Great.
So that, I mean, I know sometimes you can categorize people by experience on some of these, but somebody that might know the most about what we're looking for might just be a single mom of three, you know, so...
Great, well, we're completing that information right now, it should be ready within the next day or two, and so, we'll use the clerk to convey that information to you and follow your lead.
Okay, sounds great. All right, thank you. All right, last item is the Catholic Charities Request, and Avril Pender will share some more information on this.
You have that at your place, it's a lot like this, but I receive a request from Catholic charities regarding the future of refugee resettlement program here in the county. In September, President Trump issued an executive order which requires written consent by the county and the state consenting or permitting for refugees to be resettled in our, in our county. Catholic charities shared with me that only refugees that have a link or family in the county are resettled here, but the question before you today is to discuss whether or not you would consider signing a consent to allow refugees to resettle here. I do have Ms. Sandra Buck in the audience with us, she's from the Diocese, and she's here, and she can assist in answering any questions you have about resettling, the resettlement program.
Thank you, Ms. Pender, and I'd invite you, if you would just maybe share a few thoughts with us about this, this is, this is not a process that local governments in the past have, you know, been invited to have input on, so just since it's kind of a new...
A new procedure, so you've never had to do it before, because it's a brand-new procedure, so, we've been resettling refugees for about forty years. I'm based out of Charlotte, but people have been coming here, actually, I think it was World Relief that used to resettle refugees here years ago, and we have an office in Asheville, and so we've got a case coordinator there, who is actually a former refugee from Russia who works with these families, and we now have a remote placement program where we actually resettle directly into the Asheville area. We've resettled about three hundred refugees here in the last three years, the majority of them are placed in Buncombe County, because they're coming here to join their family that already lives here. The consent process is brand-new, and what we're required to do is get the governor and the chief executive officer of every county where we place refugees to sign a consent saying that it's okay to continue doing that.
Okay, thank you so much. And so, we have a draft letter, you can see the letter the governor signed is in here, so we could sign a similar letter, and I'm certainly happy to do so, or to have the county manager do it, one of us do it, but it's, we wanted the commission to, you know, be aware of this and to concur.
I have a question. Where are these refugees from?
The refugees that are coming to the Asheville area are from Russia, Ukraine, and Moldova.
None from any third-world countries?
No, just those three places.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure is.
That's because they're coming to family, and their families already live here, so we're not just bringing folks that will be on social services, so to speak, they're coming to families.
Is, is that a requirement that there be family here, has that been in place for a while, or is that a new requirement?
That's not a requirement, that just happens to be how the refugees are coming into Asheville. When they, soon as they arrive, they can petition to bring their family members that they left behind. That process takes a couple of years, but once they're approved to travel, then they will typically resettle with their, what we call their US tie, or their anchor family.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'd like to know as much as I can about this, I'm not...
I would, too.
I'm not able to, to vote or say yea or nay, I just want to, you know, the information was presented to us today, normally for, for information's sakes that we can review and look at, and, and, that's a large...
Let me turn this back on, that is a large community in this county, though.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it really is.
And they're well-supported, a lot of them come and they start their own businesses. They, you know, they employ their family members immediately, and the other thing to note is, once refugees arrive in the United States, they are free to travel wherever they wish, so any counties that don't consent will still end up receiving refugees just as secondary migrants. It's just a lot harder for us to provide the services if we're not, if they're not in the county with their family.
Thank you for the work that y'all do, is there a timeline by which we would need to make a decision on this?
My national has requested consent by the end of the year, the deadline's been pushed back by the State Department, but the nine national organizations that resettle refugees are all submitting their proposals for next year at the, in sometime in the middle of January, and are hoping to be able to report with their proposal how many consents they've received.
Okay. Well, thank you for the, thank you for the information, it sounds like we should schedule this for commission vote at the first meeting in January, which is on January, the, January seventh, the first Tuesday of the month, so we'll plan on having it on the agenda to make a, make a decision that evening, and if commissioners have any other questions, or if there's additional information that can be provided to us, please send that along.
Feel free to reach out to me, I can answer whatever questions that you have.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any other questions for now, but because it does sound like we need to make a decision at that meeting, if you do have additional questions, please do bring them to the county manager, and we'll work, we'll work with the organization to make sure you get any information you need between now and then, all right?
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here, appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
All right, that's everything we had on our agenda, so if there's no other items, I think we're adjourned, and we'll be back at five o'clock for the regular meeting.
I have a call.